Okay, this is regular city council meeting, Hocko City Hall, Tuesday, June seventeenth, twenty twenty-five. We'll come to order at six thirty-nine P M. Roll call. Becky Bernardi.
Yeah.
Tiffany Taylor.
Here.
Mark Deat.
Here.
Randy Bell.
Here.
Sherry Lovey is not present. Okay, invitations.
Yes.
Uh.
Appreciate it last time.
So Becky, would you have to go up and run it up?
Okay. Heavenly God, we come to you at this time as we gather together, Lord, and thank you for your many blessings. Thank you for those who are able to attend tonight, Lord, we pray for the sick and our healing. We pray for your guidance, your wisdom, Lord, and all of the dead that you would keep in mind that each of us are here for our community. In Jesus' name.
Amen. Okay, we stand and move hands for the flag to lead us. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic where we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you all. Do we have any public comments?
No ma'am, there are no public comments.
There are no public comments, okay, then I'm seven new business, uh, received wastewater and public works reports and fire report. There's no action taken on this, and we have our reports in our hand. Do we have any questions on the other boards? No registrations now this time?
They have not.
I apologize. Okay. Counsel, your questions? Okay, moving on to item D, we see USDA and S A U update. No action on this one either. At the USDA meeting has been on June the tenth, twenty twenty-five. Uh, Clyde Payne was present, and he had said that he had everything he needed from the city. We're working on the bond thing right now, that's still up in the air, and we also did not receive the numbers from them yet on the exact amounts. Uh, he said he is submitting interviews, and next, this week, it will be this week, and it was a very short meeting. We will not be having a meeting on the eighth of July because, uh, Mr. Payne will not be available on the eighth. Oh, not until the eighth, sorry, of July. I think that's all I have on my notes. Are you everything ready, Doc?
That was short, wasn't it?
Yeah, it was a pretty short meeting. Um. They're still standing on the September thirtieth deadline to do the preamendations. Um, I don't know if we're gonna make it, and I don't know what's gonna happen if we don't make it. Um, because we still don't have the numbers that we need, you know, for this council to be able to make a decision. I'm also concerned about, um, budget and tax season coming up, and those numbers still being out. Um, but at this point in time, like the mayor said, we've turned in everything that they've asked for. Um, I asked him specifically if we had any other things, anything that was outstanding, anything we need additionally. I think the only thing that they asked for would be five of twenty-four, uh, to have an update from anything that we have on the bond. How far you're trying to get, so. And then on the. You can apply this to it, to this document, this document, please. It's gonna be the same basic thing that you got last time, this came from the USDA. Uh, Ronnie was kind enough to take it and put it into a spreadsheet, which looks very nice by the way, better than mine. Um, the last page on there is the only numbers that we did anything to. And you'll see where it shows the totals that were paid, and the total interest that were paid. And then it shows the interest and principal both paid. That means that from two thousand and seven to January one of twenty twenty-five, the city of Hocko has paid the USDA eight hundred ninety-nine thousand four hundred ninety-three dollars and thirteen cents. Of that is, where.
I'll bet, I want sixty-three thousand two hundred percent of the principal. Eight hundred thirty-six thousand two hundred ninety-three and thirteen cents in interest.
Right, so if anybody could get your calculator out.
This, this cap, this is calculated from where?
We calculated it.
From the numbers that USDA gave me.
From the numbers that they provided.
I can summarize that.
Does it look like it comes from the USDA?
Yeah, all that came from the USDA. And she, right, and she just put it into a spreadsheet, making it easy to read, but you have, um, from your, uh, past week reception. The document that I provided to you that I'll attend, had all the yellow highlights. And again, that's something that you have to pay attention to. We don't have an answer, but we are seeking an answer on those numbers. And why, and it's, and it's again on these sheets, reidentified on these sheets. The date that the payment was made versus the date that the payment was processed. In some cases, that was as long as a couple of months. So we don't know, because of the information that they provided for us, did they penalize us by charging us interest for that timeframe? We don't know the answer. We can't say they did, but we also can't say they didn't, because we don't know. And it will be covered in fact from them, which still has the same questions that we had when you were here last month, if it takes.
We're here.
Mean numbers.
Yes, we did.
So we have a question.
So, you said sixty-three thousand what? Did you say something like?
It's on your last. Last. So we know how much was paid in the whole. And how much was paid in the, in the, in the, and then that last time.
And we aren't asking for some interest.
Eight hundred ninety-nine thousand dollars and what, sixty-three thousand dollars in, um, on set.
Yes, from two thousand and seven to January one of twenty twenty-five, and if you look on your sheet, January fifteenth. And it's caution about, so, um, E F B. Okay, that's gonna be your date.
Your very first payment.
Yeah, it's kinda backwards, because it starts at the bottom, as opposed to starting at the top, you went down. So it's looking at your last payments and going down line. But like I said, feel free to, um, total those numbers yourself. Something else that, um, Ronnie made a note of, that there were several things in there, where it said pay note, delinquent interest. Some where they removed them and reapplied them to a spreadsheet, and it was, yeah, what that was about, what happened, we just don't know.
Well, there were return things, stuff in some cases.
Yeah, we don't know.
Uh, where there were interest funds.
Yeah, the accounts. So that did not, I can.
It could be.
It's like, it's like twenty nineteen, twenty-one.
So I'd agree with that. Right, the one we asked for is detailed. Right, so that's what we need. That's pretty much all I had.
That's what we've asked for in the way, and I'm just exaggerating some of the details.
Well, at one point, there were six hundred, six hundred, um, six hundred forty-seven thousand, but it was, um, only what? None of these were listed.
And the numbers have changed a lot, so we're just. And that's been provided before, I'll tell you, we didn't, like, if we did have, if we say no amounts.
Yep.
So I think the stuff that came from the USDA and those, um, permanent amounts were what they, so, so they were.
I think it's really sad, so much of that is interest, interest, uh, over eight hundred thousand dollars of interest, and only sixty-three thousand.
Just paid just pay more than that.
That's a lot of money.
Well, I mean, that's paying the bond payment.
Yeah, especially with that large amount.
Yep. But, okay, so hopefully we're turning this around. As long as it doesn't turn out.
Yes. See anyone else on council, have any questions about this? All right, thank you. Okay, we're gonna move on to item C. Receive USDA and S A U update from the city attorney, no action.
Okay, so what we have is, we have an outstanding FOIA request from.
Could you please stand some?
Sure. We have an outstanding FOIA request from April, beginning of April, to the USDA, because this spreadsheet doesn't give us running balances, doesn't give us specific applications of interest. It doesn't give us the detailed history screen for the transactions, which is noted at the bottom of each segment. You'll notice that the segments are broken out by year. Some of those, uh, like, for example, if we were to go to the third page now. And you'll see that it starts with twenty thirteen, but over on the right-hand side, it says more. So those appear to be, that appears to have more information than what we were given. Um, what I did to compile this is, I took the item that USDA sent, uh, which was a PDF, and I exported it to X L S. It did not do a very nice job of exporting, but it did make it possible for me to go through section by section and pick that up and put it in a separate X L S sheet, which is what y'all have, a separate X L S workbook. Then I went back and double-checked dates and amounts and, and that sort of thing very important times, just to make sure, because it, it was a mess when I was working on it. So as I did that, I came across a bunch of things that really kinda, that don't sit well with me. I am not a mathematician, I cannot add without a calculator, and I'll have a problem with the fact that I can't add without a calculator. Calculator is much more accurate than I am. But I was, I do know how to make a spreadsheet talk. And in doing this, um, I, I don't get it. Again, looking at the third page, delinquent interest is paid. But if it's interest paid, it should just be interest paid. Why is it now delinquent interest? Because city been paying interest all along, why is it now turned delinquents interest? You'll see delinquent interest again toward the bottom of that page.
That's twenty thirteen.
That's in twenty thirteen, right.
And at the very bottom of that forty-seven thousand is actually supposed to be a note payment that's supposed to own the principal.
Well, if it was not a payment against outstanding interest, yes. If it was a payment against outstanding interest, it's in the right place. But that's an amazing amount of outstanding interest.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, and, yeah, remember that in twenty twelve, twenty nine.
I know, but one is fourteen.
You know, just hold your questions second. In two thousand nine, two thousand ten, and two thousand twelve, there sure wasn't a bunch of payments paid, all right? There were substantial amounts in payments paid, but it wasn't the running eighteen hundred month. Uh, so it's possible, I suppose, that that forty-seven, eight fifty-four would be attributable to interest. I don't know until we get the FOIA requests back, because that's supposed to have everything compiled and tallied, including a running balance. I have a few other questions about it, um, a number of questions center on when the E F B D T column, which I, I'm reading as effective date, that's the effective date that something happened. Well, then you compare it with the P R C D T, which to me means process date. All right, and then a bunch in those places, I've got questions about why did it take more than two days? Why so many times are the dates the same date, and why so many times are they different? And was the city being charged interest during that time? All right, uh, being charged on the effective amount? We don't know until we get the FOIA. Um, some other interesting comments that I have are, we get down to, go down to twenty seventeen, we're about five pages in, six pages maybe. Now remember, they start at the bottom and go up. So at the top of the next page, twenty seventeen, continue. All right, we start with January, and there's a series of payments made. And they go up to four fifteen of seventeen, however. There's a, on the next page for twenty seventeen, which is turning your pages backwards. There's a payment reversal. Why? Was there an N S F? We don't know. Huh? Yeah, we don't know that information. Uh, and then there's a payment reapplied. And then there's a payment uncollectible. And then there's another payment uncollectible. We need to know that information. The only way I can see us getting that information is A, the FOIA request, which should be the easy way. Or B, going back through the city's bank records and accounts. And trying to figure out from the bank records, what the bank records show. Otherwise, otherwise, these questions are unanswered. Um, all right, so let's go to twenty nineteen. And that one is a big mess.
So that, you know, this is no longer, they pulled up, and then pulling it, and it was, they, they can't resume.
We're getting uncollectibles, we're getting delinquent interest. Those things are, in my mind, they, they need to be answered. Uh, I don't think that we're gonna get answers from S A U. I think that that situation is a bit adversarial, and that, uh, Clyde Payne is not inclined to do that. He's focused on pushing the city through this reamortization. And I think he's getting that pressure from above himself, I understand that. Still, these are questions that should be answered. So we're on twenty nineteen. Uh, there were a couple of other very interesting pieces where amounts appeared twice. So let's look at twenty fourteen, about four, third page, fourth page in, top of the page is twenty fourteen. Bottom of the page is twenty fourteen, continue. So we've got one thousand thirty-six, six, one thousand thirty-six, eight, seven, at the bottom of the page. Showing a payment on the note, and then we're showing an amount of seven hundred sixty-three dollars and thirteen cents as going for the interest. And right beneath them, you're gonna see a twenty-four thousand dollar payment on the note. Okay, happened February eighteenth, March fifteenth, March fifteenth, all that. Let's go up above, we're seeing twenty eighteen, two, February eighteenth of fourteen, twenty-four thousand dollar payment. Delinquent interest then of one thousand thirty-six, eight, seven, and a payment on the note of seven sixty-three thirteen.
How did that happen?
Those are the same dates, they are the same amounts, they're categorized differently, and they don't make sense. So can I tell you that the figures at the last page, where the interest paid and the principal paid, those figures are correct? They're only correct insofar as the spreadsheet, because of the, the computer did the calculations. They're not necessarily correct insofar as USDA is reporting to us. I beg your pardon?
I was thinking aloud, but I said that number seems way too high. For interest, that much interest to be paid in only sixty-three thousand for a rental?
Well, I suppose it is possible as a theoretical concept, because I can't, I can't run a balance off of these figures. Can't make them make sense, there's no way I can make them make sense. But as a theoretical situation, think about twenty twelve, twenty thirteen, back there, where, where there were few payments made during those years. Okay, we've got about three, maybe four years, in which the city did not make twenty-four thousand four hundred dollars every six months, plus eighteen hundred every month. So that was not happening. During that time, that principal balance is still gonna grow interest. And according to most agreements of this nature, when a payment comes in, the first thing it gets paid is the outstanding interest. However much you can, and then if there's anything left over, once all of the outstanding interest is paid, then it applies to principal.
But is that interest daily or monthly?
The interest is accumulating daily. And you'll see the interest, uh, uh, column, I M T, R T?
Yeah, I see that.
Okay, so let's go back when this started, first page. Two thousand seven. The control amounts, the cash advances, okay, those all appear to be money that the USDA paid as this construction project progressed and required payments for work that was done. Okay, I have no understanding of why there is a fifty-three hundred dollar, twenty, five thousand three twenty-six eleven interest payment on it on August fifteenth of oh seven. It's possible, I don't have the record, but it's possible, USDA said, hey, y'all have accumulated, uh, two, four, six, seven, eight, about nine hundred thousand dollars in things that we've paid, you, you need to make an interest payment. It's possible. Do I know? No. But it, it would make sense, that at one point, I'm thinking the interest began accruing with a hundred and two thousand dollar uh, payment on February fifteenth. And then I think that interest would have begun with that figure on that date, and would have continued to accumulate and be added to as these other, uh, cash advances were made on the, on the water wastewater system project. That's what I'm thinking happened. Do I know? Can't answer, but my, my limited amount of accounting from college, um, where I used the calculator a lot. Um, my limited amount of accounting makes those suggestions true. So we just don't know.
Have you requested a legend code, just think of what all, what other codes made for?
No, I have not.
No, that would be helpful, we had that, and then we would better know how to apply those, because obviously the fifty-three twenty cents, you just find it out when they did it in oh seven. How does that go along? While we do that, and ones that are taken more.
From everything that I have seen, one A is the first annual large payment that's supposed to be made. Two A is the second large payment that's supposed to be made. I F appears to be funding, or one F, that appears to be funding though.
For all the cash advances comes to one million five hundred dollars.
Okay, and there's the loan. There's the loan.
I, I, we need other, we need other documents, because kind of this, we said three numbers don't make sense.
Well, that's why we've asked for the FOIA, and we'll have to go to Canada.
But we don't have any yet.
I know, but we keep the fortune.
Yeah, we're being rushed and on the loan to be able to try as alone while they're not giving us what we need to do.
Right, we need to be able to vet the loan. Um, I suppose it might be possible for someone on the finance team to take these figures and start applying the interest that shows. The spreadsheet is, has been sent to the finance team in spreadsheet format. So if they wanna go with additional columns off the side and start trying to figure out what that interest is, that's a potential. That's something perhaps someone on the finance team would be able to do. Uh, since I just produced this Monday, obviously they just haven't had.
This is gonna take a hot minute.
Yeah, they haven't had a chance to swing it yet.
So we're just sitting here in the last thirty minutes, I mean, we're getting more confused with the numbers.
Well, I think the numbers make sense. The numbers make sense, what we can't do is vet them, we cannot verify them. So that's, in my mind, that's the problem.
But eighteen hundred dollars is, we're just giving that money for it. Yeah, that's just, uh, that's just penalties.
It's interest that the city contracted.
Still. We're just, we're still going.
Well, we know that the city entered into, um, a workout agreement in twenty thirteen, February twenty thirteen, and so, because if you'll notice, all the previous times, we're not seeing those eighteen hundred dollar payments. We're not seeing that until twenty thirteen. And I don't know that for a fact.
They were supposed to pay the eighteen hundred a month, along with them, all the regular payments, besides that. During that time, right, and eighteen hundred was just going strictly on the interest. That's all it was going on, the whole time, to keep the interest from getting as high, as everybody get high. Yeah, bring it, so, yeah.
Okay, any other questions on the spreadsheet or discussion, I don't know, just, I've had a couple of the points? No? Okay. So the next thing is, uh, we're under the September 30th deadline to have the closing on re-admortization, what may also be referred to as replunding. It's funding again, okay? In that vein, we have, as council has determined, to choose bond counsel and we've made communication with bond counsel. He's got a lot of work to do and he's a little upset and confused because USDA, according to him, in his practice, by his experience, and mind you, he also was an assistant city attorney down in, in Austin. Okay? Uh, for the city of Austin. So he's familiar with these processes. He's a little unhappy because typically USDA provides a written proposal.
And they have not?
They have not. They have in fact refused to.
Instead they were more to, and then in the next meeting, he said, no, I put in, I
Yeah, I remember that article.
Okay. So the, uh, bond counsel's a little unhappy about that. Yet he is doing his best to come forward, okay? And, and try and bring this thing to a point where council can make some decisions. In that vein, we will be going to executive session, when he calls there. Uh, we, we will be going to executive session to review a rough draft. And it's a long one, okay? I know. We did this last week, or last, last, we're sorry, and, yeah, we apologize in advance. Please don't kill the messenger. We're doing our best we can to bring it to you. Uh, the bond counsel is, is really working for us and he's working hard. He's really making an effort. In that vein, however, Clyde Payne, uh, Special Assets Unit, has said, he's not gonna be available for our, uh, typical meeting on next Tuesday. He did, however, tell Rhonda and I that I am to produce to him a statement of status where we are with bond counsel.
Now lighter than the 24th.
The 24th, which would be our regularly scheduled meeting. Okay? Right. Also, in our last meeting, as, as you were told, the next scheduled meeting with Special Assets Unit, or SAU I refer to, will be July 8th. There's a difficulty with him having just chosen and told us that it's gonna be July 8th because the city administrator has mandatory obligations that prevent her from being able to attend at any time that week. Okay, so
And he knew that?
I, I don't think he knew it at the time. We have advised him of it. Um, the next thing that he did was promptly Wednesday morning, yeah. I didn't get to, I didn't get to go over it, no.
I was Wednesday morning.
Yes, she did. Promptly Wednesday morning, which I didn't get to go over because I was in the Wednesday afternoon and so on. Working with financial team in the morning, um, but Mr. Payne said, we're gonna have a site visit. We're gonna have somebody come down and you can use this as the opportunity to tell her about your, your progress and your challenges. Basically, you wanted, you wanted to do it today. This afternoon, not this evening, but this afternoon.
Don't they have to be some sort of morning?
Well, now
That was the morning.
That was the morning. All right?
I mean, a certain amount of time. Usually it's coming to you out.
Wednesday morning. Now remember
Problem was, I didn't know anything about it.
Remember, city's office hours are Monday, Tuesday, and Wednesday, nine to five.
And he knows this.
He knows this. We've told him, I don't know how many times. And we've reminded him and we've been courteous and gentle about it, but we, you know, let him know. Um, so he comes along and says, Wednesday morning, he sends out this email to me and excludes the city administrator from the email. Sends it to Jerry Moore, Mayor Spence, me, Nate Trisha got one, okay? And, and, and two people at SAU. One of which is the person who's supposed to be coming down. And, um, but we've never heard, we don't, I don't know who it is. Never met her. No introduction, just, you're gonna have a site visit. And, um, so his email did ask, you know, what time would be convenient or whatever, something similar to that. I didn't know the city administrator had not received it.
Yes, he didn't ask you, mean, what I'm gonna do and like, about what?
Yeah, so this is yesterday morning now, we're back. I didn't get to see that. I didn't get to totally review it until Wednesday evening after city hours. Okay? So then Monday morning, I'm on the phone with city administrator and, hey, what do you wanna do about this? And she's, oh, about what? I said, uh, got an email from Clyde Payne. He's gonna have a site visit here tomorrow at the city. And she says, we can't possibly do that. We have council meeting tomorrow night.
I was busy doing this. Y'all gonna hate me here in a minute.
Yeah.
All right? So she's trying to get everything found, compiled, and copied so that everybody gets what they need for tonight's meeting. And so she says, it, 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 no, we can't do it. So I wrote back and I think I was pretty courteous, but I pointed out to him that he failed to make sure city administrator had a copy and that between the conflicts and my calendar, because I don't work, I, I, I don't have an office in the city. I have an office that I work from. So between my calendar conflicts and the things that are going on for the city, getting ready for tonight's council meeting and, and other things, I said, you know, we cannot extend the hospitality to this person tomorrow. Please choose another day and time, allowing the city at least three business days to, city business days, so that we can, we can coordinate that. And by the way, please let us know, what are the topics of progress and challenges that you want us to address with, for the site visit?
I hope you're ready.
Yeah. Um, following that, we got an email back from him late yesterday afternoon. Last night, yeah, it was at, it was almost seven o'clock. Yeah, outside of hours, so I'm, I'm not gonna see him until this morning. And he says, oh, no future site visits will be necessary.
What did I say?
You know, uh, when I was a kid, I had a doll. All right? It was, it was a fabric doll. It was sewn together, with stuffing in it. And I jerked that doll around, all over the place. Ran it through mud, you know, and that's what I feel like is happening to the city. So I don't wanna take a whole lot of your time with the rest of this because we're gonna go into executive. But, uh, I'm on the record, letting y'all know, this is what has been happening. This is the situation we are in. The FOIA request is still stuck in processing. I have nothing other than the second email that basically said, we're having a specialist look at it to determine the materials. And I haven't had anything since then. I have looked for a phone number to try and reach somebody. That's not, that's not available. It's just not available to So the only thing I can do is email the, email the FOIA department and explain the exigency of the city's needs to have that information. My document that you guys have that we got from them, I requested it from Jerry Moore. I said, I said, we need to look at the numbers. We need to look at, you know, because you're sending us these letters intermittently over and over again.
So we should know that the numbers are high.
And then what he told me
They don't make sense.
What he told me is, remember Rhonda, this is coming from an antiquated system. And I said, okay, okay, but, you know, that's fine. So documents that you have are what they send us. I think any reasonable and prudent person would look at that and end up with a whole lot more questions saying, we need detailed information. So we asked again, hey, can we get more like, you know, something a little more concise that, that we can figure out?
A little more detail, because it's a little more information.
And this was in a SAU meeting when we asked for it. I said, uh, well, we can tell you how to do a FOIA request. It probably
You'll have to do a FOIA.
So I, I, I don't understand that, but that is, I mean, that's how everything came down.
I believe Mayor Spence is in that meeting.
Yes. I see her shaking her head.
She's only had to miss a couple, but I'm not sure which one she did.
No, she was a bad one. Right. So, I don't know. Think about reasonable, responsible, and rational behavior and I don't think, I don't think the city's doing that.
No, they, they're, they're like, you know, the legislation.
If little information is possible.
As little as they can tell you and give us everything we want. And it's not gonna happen. I don't think the council will go for it. I don't think the city will go for it. We need our information. We need our information.
Well, what we're bucking up against Yes, I, I agree with the philosophy. Okay, but what we're bucking up against is, if we take an aggressive or, uh, fairly assertive posture with them, city's not gonna get a 3M. And the city not getting its 3M is gonna end the city up with whatever the consequences are that come out of the National Programs Office.
And that's another thing. You will not answer. What are the consequences of not doing it? You will not answer that.
You will answer what the potentials are.
They straight up said when we asked them, yeah, what, what could happen, what are the potentials, what if we don't, what if we do? And he actually kinda chuckled and said, can I tell you what we're gonna do?
And that's exactly, that is a repeat. Here's the problem, here's, here's the problem with the whole situation. First of all, this guy didn't even tell us where you're supposed to have this attorney. They completely hid that from us. Now we actually have the attorney.
The bond counsel?
Yeah.
Well, not only that, we, we had a bond counsel attorney, um, from Mr. Baldwin that had stayed with us the entirety of the time, uh, even when we went back to the table with him.
Up until early this year.
Right. Yeah, when we went back to the table, uh, with the USDA in 2019, that bond, same bond counsel attorney had informed us that, um, if they would play ball, so to speak, and re-am, you know, that they would rewrite bond force. They were all set to go. And then some of the latter communications with the bond counsel attorney, um, he was included in the stuff with the USDA and the Special Assets Unit. At some point, they became uncomfortable with that situation. I'm not really sure why. Um, we could probably guess, but I don't wanna put ideas in your mind. Um, he just felt uncomfortable with that situation. Then whenever he said, well, you need to have your bond counsel on board, we're like, okay, so we called the bond counsel to find out that he has now become a partner in the firm in the student taxes and switched us to the other guy that was on your, um, agenda, that your last regulars. Okay, so up until So that point. Through March, we were still communicating with the old bond counsel law firm. Finally, okay?
Who was ready to re-am.
And he was the USDA said, let's go. When you're ready, let us know and we'll do it. No problem.
Okay, but we had
Then we had a change of
New bond attorney saying there's things that should have been done that weren't done.
Right. Then there was a change in personnel in their law firms. And that's part of what sent us looking for other bond counsel. Because we talked with Mr. Segura and, I mean, he was painting a very bleak picture and he was being rude, snide, uh, belittling, cussing down to us. So, um, we, we looked at several others and Mr. Williams, Mr. Miller is the one that, um, that came on board. And y'all So, um, those are the points I think I've covered.
And now it's not enough.
And now we're paying for it.
Well, what he
No, he does, because now the USDA is kind of was changing, okay?
Yeah, I think he was pretty taken aback when he discovered that, um, they refused to kind of propose in writing or give us anything in writing. He said, you know, instead of us doing the special servicing request and what have you, that that was something that was supposed to come from the USDA. So you can imagine our surprise, because none of us have ever been through this particular thing before. So obviously we're gonna, you know, listen to an attorney that does this. Yeah, we were kind of surprised that now we know what we're knowing. So
We're probably gonna give up, we always got
That's what we're working on. I will continue to have conversations with Mr. Miller as we complete to as much finalize as we can the ordnance that you will be reviewing on during the executive, because that's, um, that's conference with council. And it is confidential, so, because it's not complete.
Because we have so much in the executive session. Are we ready to move on so that we can get to that point?
I'm good with it. Anyway?
Okay. Uh, oh, we got item D. This guy's considering taking action on appointing a new mayor for town. It's a one-year term. Present mayor, pro town, he's gotta sit in that seat for a while. You're in fact there. He's been there a while. It's, um, it's time for us to try to pick a good mayor pro town.
Or the same one. Y'all could do neither one.
And they did a motion for it.
All right.
Okay, we have a nomination for Becky Martin. Do we have any other nominations?
Yeah, you have to have the nomination, the former nomination.
Yeah, you have to have the motion and the second and all that and then go.
Oh. Oh, do I have a second on that?
On the motion?
On the motion to nominate Becky Martin.
Forgive me, Mayor.
Uh, we're getting this off.
Yeah, let's, let's, let's be careful what we're on, for taker. He makes a motion to tender chain nominations for the position of mayor pro town. Once that is determined, seconded, and voted on, then the nomi, the nomination floor is open.
Okay.
Instead of putting them together, Mark, crash. You're, you're, you're getting
It changes every time we did, this is done and so, do we have a second? And by the way, I did look it up and a mayor pro town is allowed to vote for herself in everything I've looked up. It's only a mayor that is allowed to vote for herself. In every Texas code I've looked up.
So, Mayor, is the motion to open the floor to nominations?
Yes.
Drop, hands it out, you're my second.
It's okay, I have a second. The nomination for Becky Martin, for mayor pro town. Okay. We can't go yea and nay until we see if we have another anybody else nominating.
Well, that's why your floor is open.
You can't nominate yourself either, right? You just can't vote for yourself.
You can't vote for yourself.
According to the mirror, you can't vote for yourself.
We have a nomination from Tiffany Tyler to nominate herself as mayor pro town. Does she deserve a second? Did I guess? You second hers.
Her nomination.
We're talking about Tiffany, not Becky. We're talking about Tiffany. She's nominating herself. Picking herself up and she's asking for a second.
Did he just second it?
No.
No, he thought he was still talking about Becky.
We're now talking about Tiffany, who's nominating herself.
It's just, it's just a nomination, it's not a vote.
We do not have a second on that one. So.
Mayor, if you'll excuse me?
Yes.
Could we clear the record and go back to original nomination?
Okay, Tiffany has nominated herself to continue as mayor pro temp. Do we have a second? We have no second. So we have a- Okay, ready a second for Tiffany. Okay, so now we have Tiffany and we have Becky. Do we have any other nominations? You know, nominate yourself, yourself, anybody else. Okay, now you have a vote. Who all votes for Rebecca Bernard as mayor pro temp? Can say aye. We have two ayes.
You can't vote for yourself.
Yes, you can, you can vote for yourself.
Mayor just said so.
Yes, I looked it up and, and DM'd it and asked you to vote for yourself. As mayor pro temp, not as mayor. Okay? So, we have two. All right, and for Tiffany Taylor, who you vote for Tiffany Taylor?
Aye.
We have two. Okay, we have two and two. And you know, when it's two and two, the mayor breaks the vote.
The tie.
The tie, I mean, sorry. And I am going to vote for Rebecca Bernard.
No, you're not gonna vote.
Or I am going to break the tie. And Rebecca Bernard is mayor pro temp for this year. Okay? Done, and done.
Congratulations.
Okay. Item eight, here we go, y'all. City council goes into executive session. The city council will be, will be meeting in close executive session pursuant to Texas Government Code, Chapter five five one, including but not limited to section five five one point zero seven one, five five one point zero seven two, five five one point zero seven four, and five five one point zero eight seven to discuss action relating to consultation with city attorney Kenny Thorpe anticipating litigation relating to USDA rule of development and bond counsel attorney, you'll say property personnel, and economic development negotiations. There's no action to be taken. We will now begin out of record session at seven thirty-two. Yes, what the, no.
You know, you're fine, you're fine. Can we have like ten minute break? Since, since you're, you're recessed out of, out of regular-
We're recessed out right now.
Right.